Welcome to the October 17th, 2023 joint meeting of the Eugene and Lane County Planning Commissions. I'm now calling this meeting of the Eugene Planning Commission to order. My name is Daniel Isaacson, and I'm the Chair of the Eugene Planning Commission. I'm joined by my fellow planning commissioners, Commissioner Fragola, Commissioner Beeson, Commissioner Ramey, and Commissioner Lear. Commissioner Edwards is a little on the weather, will be excused from this evening's hearing, and we, of course, wish her well. I believe that we're waiting on Commissioner Bailing, which may or may not join.
And good evening, I'm now calling this meeting of the Lane County Planning Commission to order. My name is Eliza Kaczynski, and I'm the Chair of the Lane County Planning Commission. I am joined by my fellow Lane County Planning Commissioners, Commissioner Choate, Commissioner Dingham, Commissioner Hadley, Commissioner Lay, Commissioner Snyder, and I believe I just saw Commissioner Hanks in the waiting room, Michelle Hanks, who, as she gets promoted to a panelist, would like to welcome her, especially since this is her first Lane County Planning Commission meeting.
Wonderful. Well, thank you for joining us in this remote meeting format. Tonight, we're holding a public hearing on the proposed River Road Santa Clara Neighborhood Plan Adoption Package, which includes adoption of a River Road Santa Clara Neighborhood Plan, repeal of the existing River Road Santa Clara Urban Facilities Plan Metro Plan Amendments to remove certain policies specific to the River Road Santa Clara area, and adoption of the River Road Santa Clara Neighborhood Specific Code Amendments. This is a joint meeting of the Eugene Planning Commission and the Lane County Planning Commission, as the new proposed River Road Santa Clara Neighborhood Plan Metro Amendments must be adopted by both Eugene and Lane County. The proposed code amendments will only be adopted by the City of Eugene. Before we begin receiving public testimony, we'll have a brief presentation from staff to introduce the adoption package. When we are ready to begin the public hearing, staff will provide instructions on the virtual meeting format and how to participate. To provide some context, the planning commissions are not the final decision makers in these matters. After the two planning commissions have reviewed the proposed adoption package and other relevant material provided by staff, including testimony from the public, each planning commission will make a recommendation to its own elected officials, the Eugene City Council and the Lane County Board of Commissioners. Then, the City Council and the Board of Commissioners will hold their own joint public hearing and consider their planning commission's recommendation, as well as submitted testimony and other record materials before making their final decision. I'd like to introduce the project manager, Terry Harding, from the Eugene Planning Division, to begin the presentation, but before I do that, Commissioner Bailing is saying that the link is not working for her. Can someone send her the link, please? Ms. Harding.
Thank you, and it'll take me a moment to get my presentation up, so hopefully we can get Commissioner Bailing up and running. Can I get a thumbs up that you're seeing the presentation, not the notes? All right, excellent. Do we have Commissioner Bailing on? Okay. I'll get us going. Thank you for being here tonight. My name is Terry Harding. I'm the Principal Planner for Community Planning and Design here at the City of Eugene. And tonight, we are holding a joint Eugene and Lane County Planning Commission Public Hearing on the adoption of the draft or on the proposal to adopt a River Road Santa Clara Neighborhood Plan. So the agenda for this evening, as Commissioner Isaacson mentioned, is a brief staff presentation, where I'll cover what's in the adoption package and what the process is. Then, we'll go to public hearing testimony, and then we'll have time for commissioner questions. Deliberations are scheduled for a later date for both commissions separately. So in the adoption package, there are four main components. The Neighborhood Plan itself, amendments to the Metro Plan, and a repealing of the 1987 Plan. Those three documents, or Metro Plan Amendment Components, are proposed to be acted upon by both the city and the county. The fourth element is a set of city land use code amendments, and those are proposed for adoption by the city only. Planning Commission's role, as Commissioner Isaacson already stated, is to form a recommendation to your respective elected bodies. The draft Neighborhood Plan will provide policy direction to guide implementation of the vision over the next several decades. The Neighborhood Plan will serve, once adopted, as a land use plan, implementing statewide planning goals and guidelines at the local level. The plan focuses on economic development, transportation, parks, and natural resources, land use, and community. Each topic area includes a vision statement, goals, and policies. As I mentioned, the Neighborhood Plan is proposed to replace the current River Road Santa Clara Urban Facilities Plan, which was adopted in 1987. The set of proposed land use code changes to the city code amend the C2 Community Commercial and R1 Low Density Residential Zones within the neighborhood boundaries to incorporate the most critical items originally included in the draft River Road Corridor Code and important to the neighborhoods. This includes a building height limitation, prohibiting or limiting certain auto-oriented uses, and adding transition standards between commercial and residential zones for C2-zoned properties, and expanding small-scale collective farm sales opportunities in the R1 Zone. The goals of these code amendments are listed here: to implement high-priority land use policies and actions in the draft plan; to promote walkable neighborhoods through pedestrian-oriented design; and to shift to less auto-oriented land uses to align with citywide climate and transportation goals. This graphic shows what the reduction in allowable building height would look like, lowering allowed buildings in the C2 Zone from 120 feet down to 60 feet. The building in the upper right is shown as an example of a building roughly 60 feet in height. It's actually closer to 62. That's Amazon Corner, which is five stories on the corner of Hilliard and 31st, I want to say, in South Eugene. It's important to note that within 50 feet of an R1 Zone, the maximum building height is proposed to remain at 30 feet, which is the same limitation in the R1 Zone. So that's an existing city code provision that would remain in place as a transition. The other city code amendments proposed are design standards, including building orientation, building facade, building wall standards, window coverage standards, and weather protection requirements. A list of proposed prohibited uses, uses that would not be allowed to be established in the future going forward, motor vehicle sales, rental and service, excluding recreational vehicles and heavy trucks. Motor, lost my place, hold on, motorcycle sales, rental and service, agricultural machinery and equipment sales heavy. Storage facility, household consumer goods are also on this list. And then, the last one, allow the display and sale of agricultural products grown off-site, is to include expanded opportunities for selling produce that's grown in the neighborhood, but not necessarily on the site where it is to be sold. And just a reminder, this is a public hearing for all of the components, and so there is likely to be testimony on the code amendments, which is great, but only Eugene will be acting and providing a recommendation on those code amendments. This phase is the first step in a multi-step process to plan adoption, where in the fall of 2023, here with the planning commissions, the steps that immediately preceded this were a round of community feedback in the spring, and then over the summer, community organizations and the project's community advisory committee formed their own recommendations. After you all deliberate and form recommendations, we'll be on to the City Council and Board of County Commissioners for their own work sessions, public hearing, and action. I'd like to note that there was a proposed close of the record in your agenda materials. It was suggested that you close the record as a soft close, because this is a legislative process. On October 24th, we have gotten some testimony to extend that, and so you can choose a date that you like or can agree upon, but staff would recommend October 31st, which is two weeks from tonight. Currently, we have scheduled deliberations on November 14th for Eugene and November 28th for Lane County. Again, we can adjust those as needed. And then, we have not yet scheduled the dates for the council and board in early 2024. That concludes the staff presentation, and I can stop sharing. There we go, and hand it back to Commissioner Isaacson. Thank you.
Well, thank you for the presentation. Now, before we begin the public hearing, I want to let the public know a little bit about the planning commissions and our role. We are unpaid volunteers appointed by the Eugene City Council and the Lane County Board of Commissioners. As planning commissioners, we're committed to balancing all of the community's needs and to making the best recommendations we possibly can based on the city and county's policies and Oregon law for us and for future generations. I want to thank everyone for their patience and flexibility as we work within this virtual meeting format. As always, feel free to contact staff if there is testimony that you are not able to provide or wish to provide in a different manner. I'd like to invite our moderator, Ms. Linda Baker, to provide instructions on how to get into the queue for speaking, or excuse me, for providing spoken testimony at tonight's hearing. Ms. Baker.
Hello, everyone. I'm Linda Baker, and I will be the moderator for tonight's meeting. I'm going to cover a few housekeeping items before we begin with regular proceedings. Firstly, I want to thank everyone for joining us in this virtual hearing, and note that tonight's meeting is being recorded. Since we're meeting virtually, I'm going to provide instructions on how to request to speak during the public testimony section. When staff announces that it's time for testimony, you can get in the queue by raising your virtual hand. To do this, please click the raise hand button in the menu if you're joining us on computer, tablet, or smart device. If you're joining us by phone, you must dial *9 at the beginning of testimony. You should start by stating your name, address, and whether you're in support, opposition, or neutral to the proposal. Public testimony time is three minutes long. I will provide you a time reminder when you have 30 seconds left to speak. And once the time is up, you will be returned to the attendee status. More instructions will be provided prior to the beginning of the public testimony section of our hearing tonight. With that, it is great to have everyone here tonight, and I will hand it back to the Eugene Planning Commission chair.
Thanks, Ms. Baker. As Ms. Baker just mentioned, if you'd like to speak and have not already raised your hand, please raise your virtual hand now to get into the queue. Testimony presented at this public hearing should be directed toward the applicable approval criteria or other criteria that the speaker believes applies to the decision. In general, the approval criteria require that the proposed adoption package must be consistent with applicable statewide planning goals, the Metro Plan, and any applicable refinement plans. Staff have prepared findings to demonstrate consistency with the applicable criteria, and those findings are included in the material for this meeting. For Eugene, the applicable approval criteria are EC 9-9.7735 for the proposed Type 2 Metro Plan Amendments, and EC 9.8065 for the proposed code amendments.
For Lane County, the applicable criteria are Lane Code 12.300.30 for the proposed Type 2 Metro Plan Amendments.
And with that, I'm now opening the public hearing for the Eugene Planning Commission, and I invite Chair Kaczynski to open the public hearing for Lane County.
The Lane County Planning Commission Public Hearing is now open.
Ms. Baker, how many speakers do we have currently in the queue?
We currently have, actually, seven speakers.
Great. Well, based on the number of speakers in the queue, each speaker will be given three minutes to speak. We encourage you to submit any written testimony you have to the dedicated email address, Ms. Baker, will you provide any further instructions on how we can begin to hear testimony?
Yes. So hi again, everyone. I will announce this turn it is to provide public testimony, as well as announcing who's up next. When you're announced for public testimony, you'll be promoted to a Zoom panelist, which will allow you to unmute and turn on your video if you choose. Please do not unmute or turn on your video until it is your turn for public testimony. Please start by clearly stating your name, address, and whether you're in support, opposition, or neutral to the proposal. Public testimony is up to three minutes long, and when your public testimony is concluded, you'll be returned to the Zoom attendee status. If any technical difficulties are encountered, we will move on to the next person in the queue and try again after that person's comment. With these instructions out of the way, Kevin Journey will be our first person tonight, with another person named Kevin next. So I'm adding you as a Zoom panelist, so hold on one moment, okay? Kevin, are you there?
We should probably just move on to the next and put them into the bottom of the queue if they come back.
Person is also named Kevin, so hold on one moment. So I just tried to promote you to panelist, but you declined. You have to actually accept the panelist invite, so hold on one moment. The next person that is up is Teresa Bishow, and I will connect you now. Hold on one moment. You'll have to unmute.
Okay, good evening. Can you hear me okay? My name is Teresa Bishow. My office is located at 375 West Fourth Avenue in the Whittaker neighborhood. I'm here tonight on behalf of Action, Rentall, and Events in opposition to repealing the 1987 River Road Santa Clara Plan, in opposition to adopting the code amendments to C2 and the code amendments to remove the 1987 Plan policies from Eugene's land use code. Repealing the adopted refinement plan will significantly weaken the land use policies guiding growth in the River Road Santa Clara neighborhoods. Earlier today, I did submit a testimony that examined the land use decisions that were rendered in the 36-year time period since the plan was adopted. And one thing of interest is that of the and I didn't know I was going to go first, sorry, of the 714 land use decisions that required consistency with the applicable refinement plan, there were only four applications to amend the refinement plan during that 36-year period. 36-year period. In contrast, there were 176 zone changes. So there were to me, what that says is it's not broken, that the zone changes that required consistency with the refinement plan were by and large approved following annexation to the City of Eugene. The policies, in many cases, provided more detailed land use designations and text policies that affected the outcome of the decision. So I just caution you about repealing what is truly a refinement plan for the neighborhood and replacing it with a different type of document. With regard to the code amendments, they're not consistent with statewide Goals II and IX. They are not consistent with the recently adopted Envision Eugene. There are economic policies that were adopted to support the retention and expansion of local businesses, as well as businesses that have sustainable, climate-friendly provisions or aspects to them. And a rental company is one of the best businesses for supporting reuse and more effective use of our resources by, you don't use a tool and then keep it in your garage for two years until you need to use it again. You can go to the nearby rental place and check You can, um, go to the nearby rental, uh, place and check it out for the weekend. So their use is being recommended to be prohibited, uh, the heavy equipment rental component. Um, they have diversified their business to include other uses that will remain permitted. Um, but they had also anticipated possibly doing storage facilities. They are wedged between Beltline Road.
Hi, Teresa. So we're at, we're at thirty seconds. Teresa, you have to unmute.
Oh, are you still?
Yes, you have about thirty seconds.
Oh, I, okay, I was using thirty seconds. Okay. Well, I will conclude by saying I highly respect the neighborhood residents and, uh, participants in the planning process to create a new neighborhood plan. But the shift away from land use towards other neighborhood needs, while it might be appropriate, um, we shouldn't be undoing or repealing the adopted land use policies that are currently in effect. Um, so that concludes my presentation unless you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. The next person in the queue is Hillary Kittleson, and I'll promote you to panelist. Hold on one moment.
Okay, I'm, I'm ready when you are.
Okay, you can start, but please begin by stating your name.
Sure.
Your contact information and whether you're in opposition.
Okay. My name's Hillary Kittleson. I reside at nine ninety-five L K Drive in the River Road area. And I am speaking in support of the plan overall, but I have some specific, um, requests of the commissioners. I've lived in the, and I'm reading my testimony, written testimony into the record. I have lived in the River Road neighborhood for over thirty years and served as a member of script, which worked hard to listen to our neighbors and then lobby for the initiation of the neighborhood plan. With an allocation of a hundred thousand dollars from City Contingency Fund, the formal planning process began. At that time, the project timeline was supposed to be less than two years, and that was in twenty seventeen. The triple squeeze of COVID and dramatic middle housing code changes at the state and local levels has caused years of delay and reduced the plan's scope. So I'm asking that the city mitigate the effects of the reduced scope by using one-time funds to address concerns expressed by the Citizen Advisory Committee and by the River Road Community Organization. For me, this is a socioeconomic equity issue that good land use planning can address. In high SES neighborhoods, residents can have some assurance that highest and best use will include basic amenities that contribute to a livable neighborhood. In mixed SES areas, that assurance can only be given by government through its policies and codes. The concerns expressed by the ARCO Board regarding potential loss of commercial properties is a good example. And here's a quote from their letter. Staff decision to eliminate the proposed corridor mixed-use zone leave the majority of our current commercial properties in the C-two commercial zone. This zone allows a hundred percent of properties in the zone to be residential with no commercial at all. The eliminated corridor mixed-use zone would have required commercial on the ground floor. The economic study included in Sarah Architect's River Road Corridor Study showed that economic demand for housing is high, commercial low. So without regulation requiring it or some kind of incentive to encourage it, the commercial facilities we currently may have may well be replaced by multifamily housing. My neighbors asked for walkable commercial areas back in the listening sessions in twenty fourteen and continue to strongly support that concept in subsequent citizen input events. To respond to that strong value, I am asking that-
Hillary, you're at thirty seconds. And you need to unmute yourself.
Okay, so to respond to that strong value, I'm asking that you recommend to the city council and maybe the Board of Kindred Commissioners use of one-time funds to create a neighborhood-specific zone to protect the neighborhood and provide the equity it deserves. If citywide changes are subsequently made, that protect all neighborhoods, the zone could be eliminated.
Okay, Hillary, thank you for your testimony. We're at time right now. And the next person we have is Bill Clues. Hold on one moment.
Okay, how am I doing? Can you hear me and see me now? Okay, good. Thank, thank you very much. Technology. Um, I'm Bill Close. Um, I'm speaking tonight as a part of the Action Rentall team. Um, I have submitted two letters of substance so far. The first was on October sixth and, uh, second was, was, uh, earlier today. Um, there may be a little bit of repetition in those two letters, but the subject matter is so intrinsically exciting that it's warranted. Uh, I'd like to make four points. First is that this is not a land use plan. Any land use plan has to have a minimum components or elements according to statewide planning goal two, and this does not have those. Second point, uh, this is not a refinement plan in the, a meaning of, uh, the Metro Plan. It does not refine any more general plan. Uh, there are no binding, uh, land use policy statements. Uh, actually, the binding nature of everything it does say, uh, is disavowed in terms of site-specific decisions. And third, uh, there's no plan diagram. Somebody forgot the plan diagram. Uh, every refinement plan I'm familiar with has a plan diagram that refines and makes more specific than the Metro Plan diagram. Very important. Uh, my third point is that the repeal of the existing refinement plan is simply not warranted. Uh, there is really no analysis in the new plan of what's wrong with the old plan. Uh, uh, the, uh, binding, um, policies, uh, for the neighborhood are not being replaced by anything else. The refinement plan diagram is not being replaced by anything else. The, the, the problem with that is that the refinement plan, uh, allows people to figure out what their property is planned designated, which allows them to make applications with confidence and get approvals with confidence. Without the refinement plan, we're all stuck with the Metro Plan, which is inherently ambiguous. That leads to arguments, that leads to, uh, uh, litigation, and that's only good for the attorneys. Uh, so this thing needs a, uh, diagram and it needs binding policies. Point number four, uh, the code changes for C two are, uh, not well-advised. Simply put, the amendments will take six uses that this neighbor doesn't like, prohibit them, and move them to somebody else's neighborhood. Doesn't say what neighborhood should get them. Maybe some thought should be given to that. Uh, existing uses being stricken, uh, become non-conforming uses, and non-conforming use is a slow land use.
Bill, we're almost at time. Hold on one moment. I need you to unmute yourself. Uh, Bill, we can't hear you.
There, uh, thank you very much. I'm finished with my four points. Appreciate, appreciate the hospitality.
All right. And the second person we have is Mike Reader. And I would promote you to panelist. Hold on one moment. Mike, are you there?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
For some reason, for some reason, my video doesn't seem to be working. Can you see me? Uh, I apologize. I'm not sure why the video is not working, but you can trust that I'm here. My name is Mike Reader. I am an attorney here in town. I'm at three seven five West Fourth Avenue, Suite two oh five, and I represent Chuck and Pat Meeker, the Meeker family and Clemens Marina. Their property and business are located on River Avenue, not to be confused with River Road. This is the property that is wedged between the Beltline Highway and the Metropolitan Wastewater Management Commission Treatment Facility. Uh, I want to, uh, lend my support to the testimony that was offered by Teresa Bishow and Bill Close. Uh, we agree with much, if not all, of what they said, except for when Bill Close said that the uses that are proposed to be erased from the current C-two zone are, are what the neighborhood doesn't like. I'm not sure that's an accurate statement because we don't know if those uses are uses that the neighborhood doesn't like. Based on the material that's available to my client, to the general public, including the draft River Road Santa Clara, uh, plan, the, the proposed plan, it is unclear that these uses are disfavored uses. It is not clear why they are being proposed for being omitted out of the C-two zone. So to the extent that they're being removed, I, I agree with, or being proposed to be removed, I agree with Bill Close that there's no justification to removing them, either legally or practically speaking. My clients, uh, the Clemens Marina employ between twelve and sixteen full-time employees with above-average wages and salaries. And this proposal to remove RV, boat, and watercraft and motor vehicle sales and services is really not, uh, well-thought-out, and it's really not-
I'm muted.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, in addition to the legal issues that are outlined in the letter that you received today, there are always, I've, always all practical and policy issues. So the proposed code changes are not supported by the proposed River Road Santa Clara Plan or the current refinement plan, uh, or Envision Eugene, uh, comprehensive plan. So where are these ultimate politi-, policy choices coming from? We can't tell. Um, and, uh, with that, I will conclude my testimony, and I want to thank the planning commissioners for their service to the community.
Thank you for your testimony. The next person that we have speaking is Kevin Journey. We're going to try again. All right, so we're going to move on to the next person in the queue, and they are currently on the phone. In order to unmute yourself, you will have to dial star six. And your phone number, oh, yes, and your phone number ends with one-three-six. Hold on one moment.
Hi, my name is Harry Sanger. I'm a prior board member of the River Road Community Organization and a prior member of the River Road Santa Clara, uh, Community Action Committee. Uh, but I'd like to say tonight, that goes in part with some of the other speakers have said. Uh, I don't see how the current plan is an improvement over the existing nineteen eighty-seven plan. Uh, I know a lot of people have spent a lot of time and hard work into making this a reality, and I hate to detract from that, but based on what we've been through the last several years, um, this plan doesn't seem to accurately reflect the, the needs and interests of the neighborhood. And I think that it would be better served for the community to take this back to the drawing board and rework it based on where we're at right now as a community. Um, furthermore, I think that it's important to note the community engagement that's expressed in this plan. Um, it's, it's impressive, but it leaves out a lot of people in the neighborhood. And I think, uh, th- this is an area that we call the city counselor, and I don't think that this plan reflects the interests of all of those neighbors who, who don't seem to have a voice in a lot of, uh, civic engagement, but are part of the neighborhood. And I don't know how we get those people involved. Um, they only seem to come out at times, but it's an important voice that, that we need to consider. So, um, I, I thank both planning commissions for your hard work. I, I thank the CAC and the neighborhood organizations for their hard work. But I, I think we really need to go back and look at what that nineteen eighty-seven plan represents and, and what a proper refinement to that to, to meet modern needs would be. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. The next person in the queue, their name is RR CO. So hold on one moment. So please be sure to state your name.
My apologies for the RR CO. I didn't get a chance to change the name. Um, I am John Belcher, and although I'm co-chair of the River Road Community Organization and the Community Advisory Committee to the River Road Santa Clara Neighborhood Planning Group, I am speaking as an individual tonight. I reside within the boundary of Port Seven and am concerned about some aspects of plan, although I did vote to forward a document to the planning commission. It's extremely unfortunate that COVID-nineteen took a multi-year bite out of our project because we lost the exemplary trajectory of our neighborhood member involvement, and it likely was a factor of the loss of three principal city planners during the six-year anniversary process. It's also unfortunate the planning department pulled the plug on this process before we could reach consensus on a final draft of the plan that met the original goals of the planning process. For example, the Neighborhood Plan Project Charter, signed by the two neighborhoods, the city of Eugene and Lane County, defined the deliverables of this project, including "a more detailed approach along the River Road corridor as informed by the related FTA, TOD, grant-funded project." That was not part of the plan. Also, a primary reason for area, this area plan was to meet the goals of Envision Eugene. In the Envision Eugene, a legacy of livability, libbity, livability draft proposal of March two, two, twenty-eleven, um, we created twenty twenty-one, or no, twenty-eleven, create area plans that integrate land use, transportation, parking, parks, and open space and existing historical and cultural resources throughout the urban area, recognizing the unique characteristics of each area and provide localized consideration and treatment and planning as necessary in the land use code. Until planning staff decided to abandon the corridor studies in form, which was informed by a four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar grant from the Federal Transportation Authority, we were working towards drafting a special area zone that would be the primary goal of creating a twenty-minute neighborhood along the corridor and enhance commercial opportunities therein. So the agreement from the project charter has not met River Road Santa Clara Area Plan nor jo-, and it joins the South Lamont Concept Plan. It's the second time the city of Eugene has failed to meet their promise from Envision Eugene. Instead, the planning staff is proposing to develop a single set of code that will cover Franklin Boulevard, West Eleventh Avenue, West Sixth and Seventh Avenue, Highway ninety-nine, South Lamont Street, River Road, and Colberg Road to be completed.
Ms. Baker, you're, you're muted.
John, you have thirty seconds?
Yes, our experience has made it clear with trying to develop it along River Road that the devil is in the details, and it seems highly unlikely to me that a single set of code will please anyone. I raise this concern because this planning process has failed to address three key areas that were defined in the River Road Community Organization's response. No parking resolution for county streets. We are unique in that we don't have city jurisdiction over most of our streets. Adding density is going to create a monumental problem there. So Hillary Kittleson has already spoken- Adding density is going to create a monumental problem there. Sir Hillary Kittleson has already spoken to the-
John, thank you for your testimony. And the next person in the queue is Kevin. I'll try and promote you.
Hello?
We can hear you.
Oh, my goodness, I'm so sorry. Tell me when I can go.
You can speak.
Alright, hi, this is Kevin and Laura Journey. We oppose the amendments. We're at 121 River Avenue. We're a small business owner that employs roughly 18 people. We are Action Rental. This summer, we purchased three and a half acres next to us to be able to, intentions of developing and expanding our business for our future and to be able to offer River Road Santa Clara residents a better experience with more room and products. If the code amendments are allowed to happen, it will force our business to look for new property that will allow us to carry all our current inventory and expand to meet the needs and better serve our customers. Our recent property purchase will then need to be sold at a loss because of the devaluation from the new limitations of the code and amendments. Currently, 90% of our heavy equipment rentals and 30% of our catering rentals are from or used in the River Road Santa Clara area. I do not see a plan for the amount of new congestion that will be put on River Road and the Belt Line for people to travel to a outside rental yard. This goes against the anti-sprawl, self-sufficient neighborhood plans and goals of less auto transportation. The north side of River Avenue abuts the Belt Line with medical offices, buildings, heavy equipment rental yards, Eugene dialysis, post office, boat dealerships, used car lots, storage facility, marijuana dispensaries, a large storage facility, and across the street, you have the sewer treatment plant along with a homeless navigation center. This, to me, is not a walkable neighborhood. Where else would you want me to be? The code amendments suggest Action Rental is not good enough for our area, but does not belong, but does not make provisions where we should go or can go. Action Rental hasn't been proudly serving the River Road Santa Clara area and surrounding area for 50 years with no complaints. Why are we not good enough for River Road Santa Clara now? We provide a very valuable service to local residents. We did not have enough time to prepare for this and are limited on our information, but can tell you when we did go door-to-door and inform people about what is going on, we had an overwhelming support against this change. The people have not been informed or do not understand the impact of this until-
Hey Kevin, you have 30 seconds. I will need you to unmute.
Sorry. I didn't know, I didn't mute. Okay? Uh, we did not have enough time to prepare for this and are limited on our information, but can tell you, when we went door-to-door to inform people about what is going on, we had an overwhelming support against this change. The people have not been informed or do not understand the impact until this is explained. I welcome you to go to the River Road Santa Clara Facebook page and read the 39 comments and 13 likes we got in three days of posting this change. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. The next person speaking will be-
Miss Baker, can we get Kevin's last name?
Kevin's last name is Journey, is what he stated.
Thank you.
And the next speaker is William Dickinson.
Can you hear me? Thank you. My name's William Dickinson, and I represent AllMed Medical Equipment and W Dickinson Properties. Um, I own properties on River Road at 925 River Road, which is a commercial two, and 1375 River Road, which is a cur- commercial one property. I am, uh, sti- I'm a, in opposition to the plan. Um, I have to admit, I've only received a letter two weeks ago that this was even in process. And so I'm, I've really had limited time to prepare, but I can tell you, as I've read the plan now, it negatively affects my business's ability to help uh, people with vehicle adaption and medical equipment issues. Um, it also, uh, uh, I guess that'll conclude everything I needed to say today. Um, thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. It's, um, I'm actually gonna pass testimony off to Jared Bowder. Is there a few people in the room that will be speaking?
Yeah, we have five people signed up to submit public testimony this evening. First up, if we're ready, is Charlie Rojas. Charlie Rojas, um, in the River Road, on River Road Avenue, 740, uh, I'm neutral. In July of this year, the Oregon Court of Appeals reversed and remanded Eugene's Middle Housing Code Amendment, Ordinance 2067, 667, which would have increased housing density up to five times more than state mandated mandates. Simply put, your code was poorly planned, failed to take into account a lack of infrastructure, including sidewalks, water pipes, lighting, sewers, and as well, and maybe the most important, wastewater treatment capacity. As of now, any construction done under the age of Eugene Middle Hou- Middle Housing Code Amendment is unlawful. Many constituents told you prior to ramming through Ordinance 20667 that it was badly conceived and that you didn't have the basis for your dense housing schemes. Councilmember Mike Clark also warned the city wasn't close to being prepared. None of that mattered, not common sense, not logic, nor logic, nothing. No attempt by either the county or city was made to conform with the actual law. In fact, Eugene planning employees claimed that there was no need for that study, to which the Court of Appeals said, "Of course not. The city is not following the law. Go back and start over." Now, one of you has bothered to inform the public of the importance of that ruling. Not one Eugene planning department operative, Land County, or Eugene political functionary, nobody. Taxpayers and residents shouldn't be surprised. This is an example of the abysmal quality of Eugene and Land County's political and administrative apparatus. We didn't need the Court of Appeals to make that evident. For years, Eugene has promoted and using public resources to incentivize the construction of dense housing in the River Road Santa Clara Corridor. Many of us have asked basic but vital questions such as, "What are the rents for any of these apartments?" Without that data, we cannot determine if any one of these plans makes any sense. We've been repeatedly told, oh, we've been repeatedly told by the Eugene Planning Department that they don't, don't dictate nor predict the rent. Yet county and city bureaucrats categorize these apartments as low-income, market-rate, affordable, much-needed, but then claim they don't know what would be the rent for those categories? You're admitting that you don't have any idea what you're talking about, and you're deliberately trying to play dumb. What you don't want to reveal is new apartments rent for thousands of dollars a month and are in no way in line with economic reality. Our money is being thrown away because at some point, no matter how much you try to avoid the truth, nothing, nothing you are proposing fulfills any defined public needs. The only way any of this makes sense is if the federal government subsidizes rents and construction costs. That was supposed to have been facilitated by two congressional bills, Build Back Better and the Housing Opportunity Mobility and Equity Act of 2019. County and city functionaries were anticipating a lava flow of public money.
Uh, Linda, you're muted.
That's Charlie.
Charlie, at 30 seconds, and-
Parliament, both bills fail, the massive windfall doesn't exist, and it's highly unlikely. Foolishly Eugene and Land County plunged ahead without the means of implementing any of these overblown notions. I'll leave it at that. Thank you. Next up is Natalie Crowder.
Hi, my name is Natalie Crowder. I live at 300 Dibley Lane in Eugene, River Road Santa Clara area. I've been here since 78, so I feel I know the community well. I shop in all the stores in this community. Most of my shopping is done 80% in the Ri- in the Santa Clara River Road area. I object to the amendments to the land use code. And the reason is, is because I use Action Rental and there are the storage unit there. I think it's poor planning, it's ridiculous to think that we're gonna take these businesses away from Eugene, Santa Clara, River Road. We shop there, and if you talk to most of the community, they shop there also. Um, I rented from Action Rental two weeks ago. I, I think we need the storage, um, rental place for people in transition. I've used it several times in the years with my four children. We need the boat and RV sales. It promotes recreation. And I, we need recreation and activities for our community. That's part of the Santa Clara community. Um, it may surprise the Santa Clara organization that the businesses on River Avenue that are, are not walkable areas. I think that Terry Singer said, um, that in his talk. The sewage plant wouldn't be my top choice to walk to or by. There's other places that we can do that. And it's not on River Avenue. Um, I think that the pla- this plan has been developed by a very small group of people. They've worked really hard over the last four to six years, and I appreciate their work, but their outreach has been dismal. I know for a fact, I've attended meetings, I've gone to the park get-togethers during the summer where me, where the group of 10 went with four other people. That's not in community engagement. This has not involved the community. Um, I agree with the gentleman Terry Singer, and what else do I have to say? He summed up perfectly, there was not public engagement. I appreciate, again, the Santa Clara organization for their time and effort in this, but it needs to definitely go back to the drawing board.
Thank you, Natalie. Up next, we have Patty Swinehart.
Good evening. I'm Patty Swinehart, and I live at 2900 Shirley Street. I've lived in the River Road Santa Clara area for over 40 years. I've lived in Eugene for almost 70. I use almost the majority of all those kinds of businesses that were listed. I've, uh, known Clemens Marina for over 50 years, uh, as a business in this area. I also started attending, uh, the River Road, uh, Santa Clara Community Organization meetings when we first heard about the EMX, that it was gonna happen. And so I asked a few questions, started talking to my neighbors. They knew nothing. And I'm certain that tomorrow, as I start to talk to my neighbors, which I will be doing, they'll know nothing about this plan, zero. Because as I've been attending the meetings, I've realized it's a small group of people that have been working on this for many, uh, years, and they're very bought into it. But you will find, if we put this to a vote, just as we did with Claire Sterrett recall, because this is not a community authorized, endorsed kind of planning. And the planning commission, I get it, they are, um, they're volunteers, but this is not an agenda that the majority of Santa Clara River Road citizens are backing. I just know it, after almost 50 years of living in this area. And I was there when it was two lanes down River Road. I was there when the city said, "We're going to have a greenway." Now they're saying, "Oh, we have property. We're going to sell it." Well, they took that land from many of my neighbors, and they moved homes off of that property. So now we're doing the same thing. I, so I am opposed to the entire plan. I get it that they've spent many years, but I've looked at it very carefully. It has not the backing of the community, River Road or Santa Clara. Thank you.
Thank you, Patty. Up next is Janet Ayers.
Again, come prepared, but I am very much, um, have my thoughts on, on this in listening to my neighbors and in campaigning for Ward Seven, Council seat. Uh, I too am very much opposed to this plan that the city is pushing aggressively, pushing down the constituents' throats. This is a, a poor plan, in fact unlawful, with the middle housing position that the planning commission is just bulldozing through. The Court of the Luba Appeals came out with that, uh, the, uh, infrastructure must be addressed first. They have not laid out a proper foundation to absorb this densification. And I'm opposed to the densification. I see no merit, no good that will come out of it. And we're at a poor time. Our country nationally is at a $33 trillion deficit, about to get engaged in two wars now. And this Oregon has always been what we call a welfare state. It relies on federal funds and money's coming from the, uh, other places because we don't have the creative leadership to attract family wage jobs to this community. Our biggest employers are University of Oregon and Sacred Heart River Bend Hospital. We need true leadership that tr- that will attract and bring in living wage jobs and stop squishing us into small spaces. We have a beautiful coun- uh, state. The state of Oregon is a gorgeous state. I see no need to eradicate the businesses, the fine businesses that promote our recreational activities, whether it be boating, RVs. Uh, I see no point in punishing that, them, or the, uh, rental companies that help for folks that cannot afford these big expensive tools. And instead, and I commend those rental companies for making tools and equipment available for people that do not want to purchase them. And I find this plan is just aberrant. It goes against the people. It does nothing good for the people. And I've asked the city and their planners to stop with cramming nonsensical, fraudulent plans down our throats. And I ask them to engage the real community instead of your store-bought city activists that come to those meetings and start cramming them down. And if you voice any opposition, you're quickly told to be quiet. And this three-minute rule, I think, should be expanded to four minutes. People need more time than the four minutes, and I'm going to ask the council the same. They need to provide at least a minimum of four minutes because we lack the leadership and the know-how for that leadership to bring in living wage jobs, which is at the root of a lot of our problems here in La- Land County. I call it lame county because it does not know how to attract viable businesses and get-
Janet, you're at 30 seconds.
30 seconds, starting now.
I say I am opposed. I don't want them to go back to the drawing board. I want them to squash it. This is an experiment that has failed miserably on all fronts. It's an unlawful experiment. They're even pushing it through with, knowing that the courts have deemed, uh, the necessary components that must be put in place. I say stay with the 1987 review. It seems to have worked thus far. And I challenge the council to engage their-
Thank you for your testimony, Janet.
Thank you, Janet. And Chuck Meeker is the last- Thank you, Janet. And Chuck Meeker is the last person signed up in the Good Pasture Room.
I'm Chuck Meeker, and I oppose this change as you're trying to make out on the River Road and Santa Clara area. I am the former owner of Clemens Marina, which was established in 1958, which was 65 years ago. My wife and I purchased that in 1978, and that was 45 years ago. We wanted to move that location to be able to own our own property. So we went down to the city planners and said, "Hey, what kind of property do I have to have to sell and service boats?" They said that I had to have C2, C3 property or a conditional use permit on something of less. And so in 1982, we purchased property at 309 and 311 River Avenue. And, and the year 2000, we built a new building on that property. And we really stuck our neck out for the price of that building. And I talked to the engineer and I said, "You know, we may not be able to pack that overload by ourselves." So we talked about it, and he suggested that I rewire, wire that building with all the plumbing and stuff in the floor that could be stubbed up, and we could separate that building into six different rentals. Thankfully, we never had to use that option. About the boat brands that we sell. Alumwell, they're manufactured in Medford, Oregon. They employ 40 people. Pearl Steel Hatters are manufactured in Grants Pass. It's a special, say, private label for us. They employ 12 people. North River Boats are manufactured in Roseburg, Oregon, and they employ 144 people. Hughes Craft Marine, which is manufactured in Colville, Washington, employ 204 people. Easy Load Traders, which is a band that, a brand that we sell, employ 300 people, and they're made in Washington. With the 31 employees at Clemens Marina and those numbers that I just gave you, that's 731 people that are getting paychecks off of what we do for them. All the products that we sell are recyclable. They're made out of aluminum or steel. The boat's aluminum, the trader's steel or aluminum option. The motor is also aluminum and stainless steel. You can take all those products at the end of their lifetime, and you can take and recycle that, make pop cans out of it or frying pans or whatever you want to make. Thirdly, the boat packages that we put together, which in the marine industry is called rigging, we have three options of motors. The large motor on that boat is really expensive with today's new technology. It's called lean burn computer control. Those motors can cost $35,000 or more. So we encourage the person that's buying this package to buy a smaller trolling motor, which gets a really efficient fuel mileage. And they only cost $3,500 to $4,000, depending on whether it's electric start, power trim and tilt or so on. They are very popular and they use way less fuel.
Chuck, you have 30 seconds.
30 seconds, starting now.
More and more motors are, we're selling as electric trolling motors. Just to let these people know how fuel efficient these motors are, we ran a 99 Yamaha in our test tank on one gallon of gasoline. It ran for 12 hours and 33 minutes. Now, this is about as environmentally friendly industry as you can think of. And I could go on and on and talk about this, but I'll tell you one thing. I've been very fortunate to make my living in the past 45 years doing this, but I'll tell you.
Chuck, thank you for your testimony. Jared, do you have any other speakers?
That was everyone signed up in the Good Pasture Room. Thank you.
Thank you. So we have one last speaker, and that person is Louis Vidmar, and I will promote you to panelists. Hold on one moment, okay?
Hello?
We can hear you.
Okay, um, turn my camera on, but I'm not seeing myself. Does that work? Okay, um. My name's Louis Vidmar. I've been on the Santa Clara Board for, I think, seven years and on the Community Advisory Committee for what feels like forever. I'd like to remind those, this kind of as an aside, I'd like to remind those touting this recall that fewer people voted in that recall election yes or no than who voted for her in the previous election. There's a lot of misinformation and not a lot of PR due to the nature of special elections. To the topic at hand, it kind of stinks having people crap all over the work you've been doing for the past five-plus years. The city is not cramming anything down anyone's throats. This was a community-driven effort to differentiate River Road and Santa Clara from the rest of Eugene. And to set a positive example as a blueprint for the other neighborhoods. I was there when we had several open forums at the North Eugene High School in the cafeteria. Hundreds of attendance each time. Mailings went out to everybody. Effort was made to accommodate as much as we could from what we heard from the neighborhood, for the neighbors and the neighborhoods. In closing, is the plan perfect? No. Is it better than something that was written when I was in kindergarten? Absolutely. So let's get this passed and take River Road and Santa Clara forward into the future. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony, Louis. We have one more speaker, and it's Katie Purley. I will promote you to panelists. Hold on one moment. Katie, can you unmute?
Oh, boy. Okay, start over. Hi. My name's Kate Purley. I am a resident of Santa Clara. I'm the Chair of the Santa Clara Community Organization. I served on the Citizen Advisory Committee for the Neighborhood Planning Process since its inception, and I've been involved in my community organization as a volunteer or a board member for over 20 years. And I would just like to point out that this has been a watershed moment in the history of Santa Clara in proactive action on the part of the community to try to steer themselves into the future that the neighbors themselves have articulated they'd like to see. And this process has been a collaboration between the city and the county and the community organizations and our special districts in trying to steer our future to the, to a course that accommodates everybody who lives here and creates a path for a more resilient community. There have been thousands and thousands of volunteer hours that have been put into this planning process by residents. And there, like any neighborhood, there are competing interests and there are places where we don't all agree, but as a community trying to lay the groundwork for a better future for our neighborhood and for the city proper in general, I'd say we're doing a great job. And we have made concerted efforts to include the parts of our neighborhood that are outside the urban growth boundary, that will remain outside the urban growth boundary and are very rural in nature. And I'd just like to point out that we, if we adopt this plan, that's just the beginning of the process. We are going to need ongoing collaboration, resources, and efforts towards actually making the plan implementable over the next three decades, which is our proposed lifespan for the plan. And in addition, I'd like to point out that the community organizations, along with our collaborative partners, engaged in a two-year process to create a corridor plan for River Road from the Chambers Connector up to the, up to Huntsaker Lane. And that project had to be, it has great work in it. Lots of incredible work went into building consensus and moving the community towards compromise around densification and supporting our local businesses and creating an active and walkable corridor and working toward creating more pedestrian meeting places and building a future that requires less travel and more community building in our neighborhoods. And that work is encapsulated in the River Road Santa Clara Corridor Plan and when, at which time the city decides.
Kate, you're at 30 seconds. Can you please unmute?
All the corridors are not the same, and each corridor will need some refinements based on its own particular characteristics, and that work already exists. So please don't reinvent the wheel. Please use the work the neighbors have already done, and thank you very much for your service.
Thank you for your testimony, Katie. Jared, do we have any other speakers in the room?
We do not. I will put my hand down.
Thank you. So we currently have no other speakers for public testimony.
Okay, well, thank you ever, everyone for taking time out every evening to share your thoughts with us. Unless there are any other objections from Planning Commissioners or staff, which I believe we will want to actually extend the, the public comment period until the 31st. Is that something that I can get a motion on? Commissioner Beeson. From Eugene.
Thanks. And I, I think I do want to make a motion. I did have some correspondence discussion with Terry on this yesterday and wanted to move, move it from a week out to, it sounded like moving it out to the 31st would still give the staff time to assemble material and get it to us prior to the 14th. I'm, I'm going to push on that. Sorry, Terry. I want to push on there just a little bit since I'm, we're sitting here.
Do you have a motion or?
You know what? I have a, just a quick, a couple of questions, Commissioner Isaacson. Thank you. Are the, and this is, I guess, for Terry or for Lauren, are the findings on the city code, they haven't been released, have they?
No, we have not gotten those to you yet. They are forthcoming.
Okay, and then my second question is, when we have deliberations on the 14th, the Eugene Commission, we would expect to be talking about those as part of making our recommendation to council. So I'm assuming we'll get them sometime before?
Yes.
Okay, so I, I'm getting to my motion. Thank you. I, I guess what I'd like to do is, I'm trying to find a day that is as close to the 14th as we can reasonably go, being sensitive to staff time, which would allow us, allow for the findings to be published so that we could receive any citizen comment on it. So I guess I'm wondering, can we go, instead of the, I'll be more specific, instead of the 31st, could we move it even one more week? Since I don't know when the findings are coming.
You're definitely, that's definitely within your ability to do that, November 7th.
Okay, I'll, I'll get to it then. I will make a, I will move that we extend the the comment closing date to November 7th.
So that would be Tuesday. If you wanted to, did you want it to be 7th of the Tuesday? Or did you want it to be that Friday before the 3rd?
Well, I'm suggesting a week before to give staff a week to put the comments together.
Sure, my, my guess, my point, and I'm not, it's your motion, is that some of that week is broken up by a weekend. So it would leave them fewer workdays to get stuff done.
Okay. I think I'll stick with the 7th. Give her, I'll give him seven days.
Do I have a second from anybody?
Yes, I second the motion.
Commissioner Beeson, do you want to speak to your motion?
I think I, I've spoken already. Thanks.
Commissioner Ramey, from Eugene.
Uh, thank you. Sorry, sorry to get in the middle here. I didn't hear from the staff that they could actually do that. So is that, I'll be putting you in a position where you are going to fail, or can you work under that deadline?
As I understand the motion, the public comment would be considered by staff in our memo through November 7th. And just to clarify, this is a soft close of the record. Anything that comes out in after that will still be forwarded to the decision makers. But for us to address it in our deliberations memo to you, we would take that deadline that you set tonight and then turn around our memo a couple of days ahead of your deliberations. I, I can't say right now what that would be or if we're going to stick with the date of the 14th. But that's what I understand your intention to be, to give folks three weeks from today to get their comments in.
Commissioner Fragola.
So would that mean we would get potentially many pages of public commentary only with a day or two prior to a potential meeting where we would be deliberating? I personally would prefer more time to read the materials and prepare. And so I'm not in support of such a short timeline. I, I think I would, I would prefer to support the staff's recommendation of October 31st, which is two weeks, so that we can also receive the materials from staff in time to be able to read it and prepare.
I think that I could also plan to have those findings to you by the 31st. I don't think that would be a problem. Please, Lauren, or anyone who thinks that isn't enough time for us to get the findings to the commission, speak up. But that's two weeks from today. So I, I think that is enough time, Commissioner Beeson, for us to get the code amendment findings.
I, I really want you to have enough time, and I appreciate Commissioner Fragola's comment. I want to have enough time for the package to, so I'm, I'm only, I was just trying to find a window where once you release the findings, if there's anyone out in the community who's interested and they provide a comment, we'd have a chance to see it. So I, I'm, I don't want to, I don't want to cause a lot of trouble for staff. So I'm good with the 31st if that works for everybody else.
Do you want to amend your motion back down to the 31st?
I'll, I'll amend it back down. Thank you.
Okay. I don't think we need.
All right, I'll second the amendment.
So we have a new amended motion for the 31st. Does he, I think you've already spoken to it. Does anybody else wish to speak to the proposed motion? Not having seen any, I'll call the question, all those in favor of the motion of extending the public comment period through October 31st, signify by raising your hand. All those opposed? Okay, motion passes. Okay. As, I just want to remind again from what Terry said, in that, that it's a soft close. So if you can, if you submit testimony past that deadline, it doesn't just not go to someone, it will go to the city council. We just, at the Planning Commission, will, will, will receive it before our deliberations. Um, it is, you can direct that testimony, by the way, to rrsplan@eugene-or.gov.
And Commissioner Isaacson, I didn't actually hear if you actually closed the public hearing while leaving the record open.
Excuse me. Yeah, so we are, we are closing the public hearing for Eugene.
And the Lane County Planning Commission public hearing is now closed. The record will remain open for written testimony as explained by Commissioner Isaacson.
Is there a staff response to the testimony offered this evening?
Thank you to everyone who came out tonight. Thank you to everyone who came out tonight and spoke. Uh, we've been taking notes. We've been keeping the record and uh, as well as written and email testimony that has been coming in and plan to address the issues raised in all of that testimony in our memo to you for your deliberations. If you have additional questions that you'd like to make sure that we address in our memo, you can raise them now.
Guess I'll be moderating that. Uh, I can't see the names here, so um, uh, maybe uh, Commissioner Kozensky, if you can tell me some of the, your commissioners' names.
Uh, Commissioner Dingam, I believe, had his hand up first.
Dingam, yes, thank you. Commissioner Dingam.
Thank you. I, I have actually two pieces of Commissioner remonstrance, one comment and one question. The, the first remonstrance, I've been on the planning commission for what seems like forever. And I don't know how many updates we have received from the River Road Group uh, telling us about all of the outreach that they've been doing. And I know that to be true. So when people say that there hasn't been any outreach, I just have to dispute that a little bit with my remonstrance. Second remonstrance, uh, I have no intention of bulldozing anything through. And one uh, member of the public commented about how the planning commission, I'm trying to quote here, is trying to bulldoze this through. That's not gonna happen. Uh, there's not gonna be any bulldozing. Uh, I, so member of the public, uh, I'm sorry, I didn't get your name. You can rest assured that will not happen. Uh, the, uh, one comment then, it causes me a little concern when someone such as John Belcher, who's been involved with the process for a long time. He never actually said he was opposed, what, at the start of his comments, but I took his comments to mean that he was opposed. So anyway, just causes me a little concern that someone a- as knowledgeable in planning and who's been involved for this long is opposed. And lastly, my question, I mean, that was, that was a tremendous amount of really good public comment this evening. I really appreciate the insight that folks brought. Uh, I was particularly uh, caught by the testimony of Teresa Bishow, Bill Close, and Mike Reader, who all seemed to ask really pointed questions and I, I just, I ask and hope that staff will try to address the, the comments made by those three in particular before our Lane County deliberations. Thank you.
Excuse me. Thank you, Commissioner Bailing.
Thank you. I believe my question is similar. Two of the attorneys who provided live testimony had also submitted written testimony, which was attached to the agenda. And one of the items they both specifically mentioned was the need for a, one called it a site-specific land use plan. The other called it a tax lot-specific land use diagram. And I'd like to hear from staff if that is going to be addressed and is even feasible. Thank you.
We'll address that in the memo. Commissioner Bailing.
Uh, I guess that's a question for staff. I, uh, Mr. Bowder has his hand up, but he's not um, part of the commission, so.
Um, I'm assuming that's Commissioner Choe, who's attending in person in that room.
You are absolutely correct. Thank you. Uh, I have two questions I'd like to get on record to hopefully be addressed in the memo. The first is, I'd like to know what prompted the pursuit of this plan in the first place when we had something in place, uh, dating back to the nineteen eighties and uh, what were the shortcomings that uh, people felt couldn't be addressed by modifying the existing plan versus replacing?
Good questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Kozensky.
This uh, follows up on the questions from some of the other commissioners, um, but I want to highlight this in particular. I know that one of the reasons why having parcel-specific uh, things are useful is because the, the broader metro plan map is a little blobby and hard to read. I know both Springfield and Eugene are working on projects to create parcel-specific maps. I'm wondering if there's anything from the lands that are in the county, um, where that similar uh, work is being done. Um, I'm aware of the Springfield and Eugene projects. I'm, I wasn't sure if there's a county project for those properties within the UGB, um, that are part of the metro plan and, and so an answer to that question is part of the memo will be handy.
Uh, Commissioner Hadley.
Thanks. To reiterate what others have said, I guess it, the objections nearly all come from the commercial side. Specific businesses that claim that this proposed plan will hamper their ability to do business and to grow. And I would like staff to respond as specifically as possible. If we forward this plan, what does that do to Clemens Marine? What does this do to the rental company? I mean, I understand that Clemens Marine cannot build a new building that's a hundred and twenty feet tall under this new plan, but I don't believe they have the intention of doing that. So as, as much in terms of nuts and bolts, why is every business lined up against this thing? And why are we only hearing from them now after this many years? And that, that's, I'm not looking for an answer tonight, just a response from staff.
Okay, throwing myself into the mix here. Um, there's a lot to unpack. Um, I'm gonna try to do this a, a little bit diplomatically here. Um, there are folks who have come tonight and, and spoken um, uh, about the the plan and as, as it's been previously mentioned, it's been in the works for five years. I'm hoping, and this is not directed toward anyone in a specific or to the city, that when this is over, that those folks engage with future projects faster than where we are in currently in this project because those folks, I have noticed in other projects have also come to voice their, you know, concerns and I think that they add context to the decisions that we're making and I think that that helps, but it's hard to have that five years into the process. So I'd hope that that um, happens. Um, as far as what we've heard from, from businesses, I, I think for a, a question from staff is how many uh, of our outreach uh, conversations or time, um, even down to specific notices have been sent out to the local businesses and River Road? That's a question I would have. Um, were developers or businesses part of the outreach and if so, how and when? Um, you know, it's, it's hard to reach out to thirty-five thousand residents along River Road and Santa Clara, uh, I, I, outside of sending a mailing or maybe two. It's not really within our budget to go door knocking to thirty-five thousand people, but there's fifty or maybe seventy-five businesses along River Road. Um, that seems to be a, a fairly cheaper process and given that this is going to directly impact them, I think that that's, we should be able to outline that. I'm not wild about picking winners and losers um, in the business community and it does concern me in that we just had got done having a site-specific zone change for Cintas. And in that deliberation, we talked at length about how when you look at the map, it is a total Swiss cheese. It's across the street, it's one zone and then we change it to another zone and we go through this process of doing site-specific zone changes for one specific business who wants to expand their business outside of what the current zone allows. And I feel like this is setting that up again along River Avenue. Um, I don't imagine or see um, any real scenario by which we're gonna be building apartment buildings uh, down, down there. So I just foresee a long line of these uh, site-specific zone changes. They're gonna occupy legal time, staff time, planning commission time, city council time, um, that may or may not need to exist. So I'd like the staff to kind of respond to that um, as best they can. Um, and next, and this is last, you know, there's been the idea of floating of, because what we're proposing here doesn't have any teeth. There's no, there's nothing in it that is, the word shall, right? That, that, that we're not saying that the, the it is a, essentially a Christmas tree list. It is what we envision for Eugene. We want these things to occur on River Road. We've taken essentially out all of the parts of the plan over the past five years that would have any specific teeth to it. So is there a reason why we can't layer the action plan on top of the existing uh, uh, nineteen eighty-seven plan and roll forward, which does have teeth, does have a site-specific uh, map associated with it? So businesses can plan uh, things out. As we've heard from businesses before, they bought these places years in advance on, based on their growth plan. And businesses to thrive need two things. They need to have stability and they need to have planning. And if they can't know that the planning, that the plan that they bought is gonna be useful twenty years, thirty years from now, it's gonna be very difficult for them to, to thrive. And that is thriving businesses is one of the key components of what we're here for. So if we could have an argument back to that, that would be great as well. Looks like I've got Commissioner Snyder.
Thank you. Um, I, I should uh, start out by saying I, I live in Santa Clara, although I'm outside of city limits. Um, so this, all of this affects me, uh, whether or not this makes it a potential conflict is for later discussion, I suppose. Um, but, you know, I, I want to recognize the huge amount of work that's gone into this. I read through the plan um, over the weekend and um, I would also note that I definitely have received mailings about this and have seen signs about it. Um, I don't believe I've attended any of the community meetings, but that is purely on me, uh, that I failed to attend any of those. What's next? I mean, not for our process, but if this plan were we forward on the recommendation, the commissioners at the, at the city and the county level approve it, they wipe out the old plan, you know, assuming that this goes forward as, as writ. What's the next plan um, to get the, this implemented, you know? Uh, as Commissioner Isaacson said, there, there's, there's a lot of uh, there's a lot of really great stuff in here and there's not a lot of, how is it gonna get done? Um, so, you know, that's my question. It's like, what? How do we do it?
Hey, looking for final comments from other commissioners? Okay. The next step in the process is that Eugene Planning Commission will hold time on its November fourteenth agenda to deliberate and make a recommendation on this matter. The Lane County Planning Commission is holding a, a time on its November twenty-eighth agenda to do the same. On behalf of both planning commissions, thank you all for joining us and speaking tonight. The meeting of the Eugene Planning Commission is now adjourned.
The meeting of the Lane County Planning Commission is now adjourned. Thank you.